Good morning, Chair. We are now live.
Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee. I am Councillor Maggie Cullen, the Vice Chairman of the Committee. In the absence of Councillor Jimmy Brooks, Chairman of this committee, I will act as Chairman for this meeting. In absence of a Vice Chairman, I would like to propose Councillor Reeve to support with Vice Chairman duties for this meeting only. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Wimhurst, thank you. We will now vote. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That is now carried. Councillor Reeve, please join us at the top table. In addition to welcoming all members of the committee to this meeting, I would also like to welcome Councillor Steve Cleck, Executive Councillor, Adult Care and Health, and Councillor Maria Hume, Executive Support Councillor, Adult Care and Health; Martin Samuels, Executive Director of the Adult Care and Health and Community Wellbeing. Other presenters will be introduced when we reach their time. Before we begin, there's the standard announcement. If we have a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors into reception and assemble in a car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. The audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the County Councillor's website and all your comments will remain accessible online. Please have any mobiles, laptops and iPads on silent mode. The hearing loop is now activated. Requests to speak will be collated by the top table. Please indicate early when you wish to speak. We will now move on to the formal agenda. Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. We have apologies from Councillor Brooks and we have Councillor Wimhurst replacing Councillor Brooks for this meeting only.
Do any members wish to declare any interest? Minutes of the meeting of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee held on 3rd of September 2025. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record. These are on pages five to eight of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposal? Councillor Wimhurst, thank you. And a second, Councillor Bean, thank you. We will now vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against? And any abstentions? Thank you. Those minutes are agreed as a correct record. Announcements by the... Oh, sorry. Announcements by the Chairman, Executive Councillors and Lead Officers. Myself, the Chairman and Mr Samuels have visited Lincolnshire on the 2nd of October 2025. And this is the report from that meeting. The Lincolnshire Care Association, which is often referred to as Lincolnshire, is the representative body for residential care providers in the county. Recently, myself, the Chairman, attended a meeting of Lincolnshire to get to know representatives of Lincolnshire's key providers. It was a great opportunity for us to hear their voice and develop a positive relationship in order to work well together in the future. Moving on. Are there any announcements from Councillor Steve Cleck, the Executive Councillor for Adult Care and Public Health?
Not on this occasion, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Cleck. Now, turning to the Executive Director, I understand you might wish to update us briefly on the Care Quality Commission assessment in December.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so members of the committee will recall at your last meeting that I noted that Lincolnshire was due for an inspection by the Care Quality Commission and that we had been told that we would hear by the 1st of September the details of that inspection. And you'll recall that that meeting was on the 3rd of September and at the time of that meeting, I had not heard anything from the Care Quality Commission. Things have moved on quite considerably since then. So briefly, shortly after the last meeting of this committee, I received the email, the notification from the Care Quality Commission confirming that they are going to inspect Lincolnshire as part of their process. We received a detailed timetable of what we are required to do and what will happen at various stages. We are now well into that timetable. I think it's worth noting that although CQC have deliberately tried to design a process which isn't as intensive in a short period of time as the Ofsted process is for children's services, it is quite an intensive process for an extended period of time. So we have so far now provided our self-assessment document to the Care Quality Commission and we have provided the information for all of their information requests. That was well over 100 separate documents that have been provided to them. We had to go through a process to identify the right documents, to support the right information request area, to check that these documents were correct, to upload them all to the CQC site and then check with the CQC that they had all been received. That process went very smoothly and CQC are currently working their way through all of those documents. Second stage was that they asked us to provide them with details of 50 individual people who draw on care and support and who had given permission that should the CQC wish to interview them, that they would be willing to be interviewed by the CQC. So that's again a substantial piece of work. We identified 50 people as a representative sample of the people that are supported by the council and we have supplied that information to the CQC. They will now select 10 from that sample and will let us know who those are so that we can then arrange for those interviews to happen. As a third stage, they've asked us to provide information about every single person who approached the council seeking care and support over a six-week period and every single person where a safeguarding concern was raised over that same six-week period. That totals something like 8,000 individuals. So this is part of a new part of the process. So it's not part of the formal process that they've done with the other 148 councils. It's something they're intending to do for round two, but they're piloting it with ourselves and the other four pilot councils. Where they want to take a sample of that wider group of people and the intention that they will do is that they will then sit down with the social worker that has worked with those individuals and looked at those cases and essentially look at a significantly larger number of cases than they've done. But part of the feedback that they've received in their process to date is that looking at 10 individual cases, when the council supports something like 11,000 people at any one time and has something like 50 or 60,000 inquiries in a year, looking at 10 cases probably isn't necessarily representative. So they're deliberately seeking to look at wider. So we've been working with them on that. Next stages are that they will be doing an online call with our data and performance team to go through the data and to deal with any questions and queries that they may have from that. There will then be, again, a half-day online session with me and my senior team with CQC where they are going to explore quite a wide range. There's a long list of areas they want to look at in terms of our strategy and our activity and our improvement plan. And then they have said that they are intending to be on-site with a team of inspectors on the 8th and 9th of December, though that may turn out to be the 9th and 10th of December. They're still working out the details, but they'll be on-site with us for a couple of days. There will then be further remote queries based on what they found and further data they'll be looking for. We are expecting to receive the draft report in February for accuracy checking and CQC have said that they intend to publish the report before the end of March. So you'll see when you look at the forward plan that we've put in for the April meeting of this committee a substantive item where I can bring the published report. Unfortunately, I will see the draft report before it's published, but it is... CQC are extremely strict that I'm not allowed to share it with anyone because it is purely for accuracy. But once it's published, we'll bring it to this committee and we'll share what CQC have found and our response to that. And as I say, that will be the meeting that's in the work programme for, I forget the precise date, but late in April. So that's our update. My intention, Chair, if it's okay with you, is that at each subsequent meeting of this committee between now and the April meeting, in the same way that I've just given that brief update, I'll give, or perhaps not such a brief update, but I'll aim to give a short update so that the committee is aware of what's going on. But as I say, I will have little clue as to what ratings CQC intend to give us until I actually see the draft report, which, as I say, is expected to be in February. Thank you, Chair.
That's excellent. Thank you very much, Martin. May I ask if any members have any questions? Could I please ask if you do have any questions to keep them brief as our agenda is quite full today? Thank you. We may now move on to the next item. Active Recovery Beds recommissioning. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages nine to 42 of the agenda pack. This report seeks approval for the recommissioning of active recovery beds. This decision is due to be considered by the Executive on the 4th of November 2025. The views of the scrutiny committee will be reported to the Executive as part of its consideration of this item. I understand that there is a revised recommendation three on page 12. It should read, delegates to the Section 151 Officer in consultation with the Executive Councillor for Resources, authority to take the funding reprioritisation, apologies, decisions necessary to progress the work should this proposal receive agreement to proceed. This report will be presented by Martin Parker, Assistant Director of Adult Care and Community Wellbeing with the support of Carl Miller, Senior Strategic Commercial and Procurement Manager. Would you like to present your report in about five or so minutes, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about the recommissioning of the Active Recovery Bed Service. So what are active recovery beds? Active recovery beds, or shortened sometimes to ARBs, are a short-term, goal-focused re-abatement service commissioned by Lincolnshire County Council in partnership with Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. These beds are located within residential care homes across Lincolnshire and are designed to support individuals who are medically fit for discharge from hospital but are not yet ready to return home safely. The service provides up to 28 days of intensive support, including occupational therapy and carer-led re-abatement. This then helps individuals to regain their independence. The aim is to enable people to return home with reduced or no ongoing care needs. ARBs are also available to individuals in the community. This is to prevent unnecessary hospital admissions with referrals accepted from services such as within our own adult care teams, the Urgent Community Response Service and the East Midlands Ambulance Service. So why are ARBs important? The ARBs play a vital role in Lincolnshire's intermediate care system. It supports the council's Home First approach by reducing hospital stays and facilitating timely discharges, preventing admissions by offering an alternative to hospital care, promoting independence, helping individuals regain mobility, confidence and daily living skills, and reducing long-term care needs, which in turn lowers the demand on home care services. So just some of the benefits that are highlighted within the report around the ARBs. These are both clinical and financial. So 64% of individuals using ARBs return home either with reduced care or no care needs. A recent review showed a cost avoidance of nearly £1 million over a three-month period in reduced home care needs. So for every £1 spent by the council, this avoids a £4.17 future home care costs, which is a significant benefit. The service supports the sustainability also of the local care market by commissioning beds from Lincolnshire providers. It also strengthens our partnership working with the NHS and aligns with our national health objectives. So it's just a very quick overview of what ARBs are, why they're important and those benefits that they bring to us. I shall now hand over to Carl to take you through the various contract elements.
Thank you. So the current contracts have been in place since July 2023 and will expire on 31st of March next year with no options available to extend further. So the recommendations of the report will enable continuity of support with effect from the 1st of April next year. Bed numbers have been reduced through the term of the current contracts to align with presenting demand and that flexibility around increasing or decreasing bed numbers is written into the contracts to ensure that the numbers of beds required to deliver the service matches the presenting need. Beds are purchased through a block payment mechanism to ensure the availability of capacity and providers must ensure that their active recovery bed provision is always staffed and available to accept new referrals. Because of the block purchasing model, payments are made whether beds are occupied or not. So it's important to ensure that the right number of beds are purchased through the next contract cycle and demand and utilisation modelling work has been undertaken and the proposal is in order to reduce the difference between the usage cost and the contract spend. The number of active recovery beds for the next contract will reduce from 29 to 24. That will take the average occupancy from currently around 70% to over 90% and will, as a consequence, improve the already significant return on investment offered by this service. That flexibility, though, will remain to adjust the numbers of beds through the next contract cycle in line with presenting demand. Now, the active recovery beds are just one component of the current intermediate care services landscape across health and care in Lincolnshire at present and a new integrated care system, intermediate care strategy is in development with a vision being to develop a seamless intermediate care service that meets people's needs in a timely manner, is simple to navigate and supports people to maximise their independence in their own home and reduces the need for longer-term care as a consequence. Now, because that is still in development, a short duration of one year is proposed for the initial term of the new active recovery beds contracts. The other significant driver for that duration is budget availability, which is currently only confirmed for one year from both the County Council and the Integrated Care Board's perspective. However, it is proposed that there will be opportunities to extend the contracts by up to a maximum of a further two years if that's required to enable the next iteration of the active recovery bed service to be a stepping stone essentially towards the implementation of future integrated intermediate care service, subject, of course, to the availability of funding in future. Just finally to touch on the budget and cost implications, the bed rates will continue to be set by the council at a level consistent with other bed-based intermediate care service provision. Joint funding between LCC and LICB will continue with a 50-50 split of the contract costs and for the initial contract year, it's proposed that the council's funding element will continue to be paid from non-recurrent grant reserves, subject, of course, to the approval of the recommendations of the report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much to you both. Thank you for your introduction. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Bean?
Thank you, Chair. I see there's mention of the possibility of an in-house service. What would the in-house delivery model look like? And what would the difference in cost and care quality be as a result of that?
I'll start with that. So we are constantly now looking at, is there scope for the County Council to be the provider of care? Because as the costs have increased through inflation and national living wage, the difference in cost between in-house provision and external provision is not as great as it used to be and we're conscious that this administration has a greater desire for the County Council to be a direct provider of services. So we are looking at those now at every opportunity when we're recommissioning services. We're looking at, is there a possibility for an in-house provision? The situation at the moment, I think, is a clear no at this stage for this service because the County Council has no direct care provision at all and therefore for us to be an in-house provider, we would have to acquire some properties and we would have to acquire staff to run them. And perhaps most importantly, because of course the council could always buy some care homes and could buy, potentially if we bought an existing care home, the staff would chup you across. There is the issue of the management and professional oversight that that kind of service would need, which we simply don't have in the council anymore because, as I say, all of those services were externalised some years ago. That is, however, a possibility that the council could have, as I say, either a direct service provision or an arm's-length body which did have that capability and that's something that we're looking into as a possibility. But it would be quite a, it would be a significant step to be taken carefully. So it's not an option for us to do for this particular service at this particular time, but it is something that we are looking at in terms of, would it offer some benefits? I mean, one of the issues that we are finding is that increasingly we're seeing provider organisations falling over for financial or quality reasons and there is significant cost involved in that. And sometimes it may be that it's actually better to pay a bit more upfront, potentially to run services in-house rather than to deal with that. I would just have a note of caution. I've worked in a previous authority where we did have in-house services and the average quality of those in-house services was actually about the same as the average quality of external services. And indeed, the council found it quite difficult to run services to a high quality internally because it wasn't the core business of the council. But there are other councils that run in-house services to a very high quality and make it work. So it's something we're looking at. So it isn't an option for this now, but it is definitely something that we're exploring to see whether it could work or not in the future.
Thank you very much, Martin. Councillor Reeve?
Thank you. I was quite surprised to hear that at the current rates, you've only got 70% occupancy. If I drop the number of beds to 24, you're going to have potentially over 90% occupancy. How does that tie in with current bed blocking situations within the NHS? Because I was under the impression there was a lot more bed blocking going on than just could be supplied by 24 beds. And is there a disparity between the need and the actual utilisation of what's available?
So these beds have a very specific focus in terms of eligibility and the criteria for somebody to be referred into an active recovery bed really relies on the identification from health and care professionals of an ability to benefit from a period of intensive re-abatement to enable them to return to living at home as independently as possible. Now, that doesn't apply to everybody who is moving through the hospital system and ready for discharge and there are other services available to support people who perhaps don't have that precise eligibility to qualify and benefit the most from an active recovery bed to receive support to leave hospital in a timely way. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? So Carl is absolutely right in terms of the active recovery beds and I think it's really important that we see the active recovery beds as being specifically about active recovery and that they are for a particular cohort of people who can benefit from that intensive support. And it's actually quite important that we maintain that capacity to be focused on people who are in a process of recovery because actually having that capacity focused on that cohort means that the people who go through it are more likely to get a better recovery. So if I can very briefly pick up your point about the ability of the NHS to discharge more generally. So there are a couple of aspects there. So Lincolnshire has a significant amount of older people's residential care capacity available. So we have no difficulty placing people. So the people aren't delayed from hospital because we can't place them in a care home. So that isn't an issue for Lincolnshire. Occasionally, there may be some delay because it is more difficult for us to put together home care packages, but it wouldn't be appropriate for someone to be in an active recovery bed while they were waiting to go home for a home care package. Occasionally, we do have some issues there. But generally, where people are delayed in hospital, they're fit for discharge, but they haven't been discharged. Generally, these are because of administrative issues within the hospital, getting their drugs sorted out, sorting out patient transport and the like. We are very fortunate that our relationship with the NHS in Lincolnshire is very good and we don't have that kind of tension between the NHS and local authority about whose results were discharged. Essentially, the system works quite well and if people are being delayed, it's not because of a lack of capacity in adult social care.
Thank you very much to you both. Councillor Lee?
Thanks, Chair. First of all, thank you for a really good, detailed report. It's a very, very good report. As somebody who, until last October, was a nurse for 25 years, I listen to everything that you say and I just can't praise this highly enough. It takes a huge amount of pressure off the NHS. I've made some notes of a number of points. First of all, I think you make a really good point about quality, Martin. And I don't have a preference for it being in-house or not in-house, but I think it's a good point and value for money is actually what's important and the cheapest isn't always the best option or the most effective in the long run. And just very respectfully, would I say, can I just ask that people don't talk about bed blocking? If you said to an old person laid in a hospital bed who's desperate to go home but can't because they need some sort of social support, that they're a bed blocker, it's just so offensive. It really is. They're not bed blockers. They're people who are waiting for the support that they need to go home. So I would really ask that we don't use that term. So going on to the points that I've noticed, first of all, these really do promote independence, these beds. And as well as taking pressure off the NHS, and I hear people say, oh, but we're LCC, you know, it's up to us, we only do our bit. Actually, we're part of a team of people who look after the people in Lincolnshire. So taking pressure off the NHS is important, but it ultimately actually supports our social care services as well because if you help people to maintain their independence and the skills that they've got, then in the long term, we spend less on social care for them. So this is a really good thing. I was actually, Carl, I was really surprised about there being empty beds. You could have knocked me down from somebody who's been on that ward trying to get somebody out into one, you know. I'm really surprised that there are empty beds, but you're obviously on that, you're monitoring it and we're not spending money that we don't need. But I do think that flexibility is really important, absolutely, because then you can get these people out and give them the care that they need if the beds are available. And just finally, this really does align perfectly with the aims of the NHS 10-year plan, to provide care within communities, because this is doing exactly that. So I would give this 10 out of 10. It's a great scheme. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Lee. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chairman, and likewise, it is a very good report. I'm going to wrap my points up into two, sorry, let me start again. I'm going to wrap my two questions into one because I know we've got a full agenda. So the first one is... So the first one is obviously, the data shows quite impressive cost avoidance and fast hospital discharge, which is fantastic. But could the active recovery beds model be expanded or linked more closely with community re-ablement to reduce hospital admissions in the first place? And then the second point I wanted to ask is about, because obviously, we know the ICB's got uncertain funding beyond 2026, 27. What contingency plans are in place to safeguard service continuity if NHS contributions cannot be maintained?
Shall I start with that? So in terms of your first point, I think I'd invite you to wait until Hayley presents about the intermediate care and preparations for winter because I think that issue of an integrated re-ablement approach, whether people are at home or in beds, is part of that. So Hayley's on notice to make sure she covers that in that one. And then I managed to forget the second part of your question, my apologies.
Sorry, Chairman. Funding post 2026, 27, you know, if NHS contributions can't be matched.
So if the NHS decide not to continue funding, you'll have seen that the, so we have various options. So we could just stop the programme, the contract allows for that. That probably wouldn't be a sensible thing, but we would have the potential to do that. So as Martin said, the calculation is that we save £4.70 for every pound that is spent on these services. That's on the basis of the council making a 50% contribution. So in theory, if the NHS pulled out all of their funding, the local authority potentially could continue to fund the whole service. Instead of making a £4.70 per pound saving, we'd make a £2.30 per pound saving. So it would still be good value for money, but it wouldn't be as good. Obviously, on top of that £4.70 per pound of benefit that accrues to the council, the NHS gets benefit. I mean, they wouldn't be putting in their 50% if they weren't getting benefit. And I think we would argue strongly with the NHS that it would be a false economy for them to pull out of this. Because as I say, on top of the £4.70 per pound that we save, the NHS is saving money as well. So it's a net saving for them. So it would be, I think, quite short sighted for them to pull out. And that's the kind of conversation we'd have with them.
Thank you very much, Martin. Thank you, Council Cook. And Council Overton.
Thank you very much. And apologies for being a bit late this morning. I had a meeting this morning about school traffic. And so apologies for that. And then I've also got a meeting with the minister this afternoon, so I won't be able to stay the whole meeting. So apologies. The other thing I want, the question I wanted to bring up relates to, just to emphasise the value of this kind of work. We did have a big campaign in my area to keep the Grantham hospitals open and Sleaford, not hospitals, sorry, the re-ablement centres, when they were owned by the council. And I did do a video and interviewed a lot of people there. And I have to say, the quality as people saw it was excellent. It's something like 98% of people thought it was wonderful. You know, it's a staggering success, eye watering success. So I think clearly the process is important. I wanted to pick up also the point about why we're separating out this kind from the re-ablement? Because I wonder if they shouldn't be together? Is it just because this is involving occupational therapy, whereas the other doesn't perhaps? I'm trying to see, the numbers are very small as well, as was mentioned. So I just, is it really worth separating out these two services rather than putting them together? Thank you.
So seeking to come to that briefly. I mean, at present, the bed based re-ablement is secured by going to care home providers and essentially taking a wing of their care home and saying, well, we'll use that as a re-ablement hub and then putting additional occupational therapy into that. And therefore, it needs to be done through the organisations that own care homes. And the home based re-ablement is done through an organisation called Libertas, you may well be aware, which is also one of the organisations that does home care. So because of the need to use physical properties that are owned by other companies, we have to separate in a contractual basis. But you're absolutely right that it makes sense for there to be a single approach to re-ablement. And that is one of the things that we're working on, that there's a single model. And it might be that there are different organisations providing it, but that it should be from the experience of the member of the public, it should be a seamless process, that you just go through whatever is the most appropriate. So we are looking, you know, as part of our next development stage, to have a re-ablement process. And just to, you know, people will go to the area that is most appropriate for them. So your point is very well made and on our agenda.
It's coming out, thank you, yeah, I appreciate that. As I understand it, you're saying four weeks of this extra ARB care, which involves occupational therapy and then up to another four weeks of re-ablement, which might be in a different centre. So we've only got three centres providing this service and then I think many more centres providing the re-ablement. So people have got to move between? How does that work?
So the home based re-ablement will be done in someone's home. So you're either in a bed in one of these three locations or you're at home and someone will come to your home. So we're not taking people to other centres. And the home based re-ablement involves OTs as well. It's just the question of whether people are well enough to be at home and receive re-ablement or they are that bit less well and they need to be in a care home bed and receive the re-ablement.
I see, that makes sense, thank you. But I still think they should be together.
Thank you very much, Martin. Thank you, Council Overton. And thank you very much for your apologies as well. Any more questions or comments from anyone? Thank you for all your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item. Firstly, I move that the committee support the recommendation to the executive as detailed on page 12 of the report, namely that they approve the proposed active recovery bed recommissioning. And secondly, I move that the summary of our comments be shared with the executive for their consideration. Do I have a second, then? Council Bean. We will now vote. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that is agreed. We now move on to the next item, item six, Lincolnshire learning disability and autistic people peer review summary. This report can be found on pages 43 through to 48 of the agenda pack. The report summarises the findings and recommendations made as a result of the peer review for Lincolnshire learning disability and autism. The report will be presented by Hayley Ecosse, Deputy Director of Adult Social Services. Would you like to present your report in about five minutes or so? Thank you very much, Hayley.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. So I'm here today to present the report. So in September 2025, Adult Care and Community Wellbeing hosted a team from Partners in Care and Health to undertake a sector led peer review for the learning disability and autism service. And before we go into the findings, I just want to say a special thank you to the people with lived experience that took part in that review, especially at the quad. And the feedback was really positive. So I want to say a special thank you for people in giving up their time to support the process. The review team from Partner Health and Care were sector experts and they appraised the service to apply a sector led improvement methodology, which included people with lived experience. And this reviewed areas of strength and suggestions of areas of improvement. They completed a two day extensive review, which included 42 interviews with over 50 people. Also included a review in 120 published documents or pieces of data. And this was then used to formulate findings and recommendations. So the scope that the review team were looking at was around local context and whole system working, sustainability, capacity to deliver and service design. Since that, the team met with us and fed back to the exec team and senior leaders and those that took part in the review of what their finding was. And there was a follow up substantive output from that that was then sent to Martin, myself and the leadership team. We've since then had a feedback session with system partners and colleagues and people who were involved in the review to feedback and devise the next steps of implementing the improvements. This is aligned to the Adult Social Care Improvement Programme. So we're ingraining it in all the governance and work that we're doing in terms of the improvement plan. And we're working really closely with our NHS colleagues because there's a section 75 risk share agreement, which we have with the ICB. So there's really strong links there. And it also links into the National Neighbourhood Agenda. So we will then be building on those actionable plans aligned to the service delivery of those. And they'll be monitored within the Improvement Programme and the Improvement Programme Strategic Board. So I'd like to again, thank you everybody for who took part in that, especially people with lived experience in the team. Say a special thank you to Partners in Health and Care for taking their time to come and meet with us. And ask the committee to please note and agree the report and agree to the implementation of the improvements that were suggested. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hayley. Thank you for your presentation. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements. Do we have any speakers? Council Bean.
Thank you for the report. So what would you feel is the impact of the rural geographical nature of Lincolnshire on the delivery of overall quality of services provided to the individual?
Thank you. So this was, in particular, the feedback from the peer review. So one of the areas they talked about was transport and how we can support people with learning disability and autism to access community services. And some of the impact of that is around transport. So they were saying if people wanted to get a job, for example, there may be impacting the transport arrangements. So asked us to think collectively around some of that. They did note the geographical challenges. And these are challenges we see across people who access adult social care and support, but not only people with learning disability and autism. So this then feeds into our strategic commissioning strategy that we're working on and also our accommodation strategy, so that we're able to make sure that there's place based support for people in their communities going forward that they can access. And where there's not, that we're really driving forward those plans to make sure that we've got that in place for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Hayley. Thank you, Council Bean. Council Cook.
Firstly, it's great to, I've done LGA peer reviews myself. I know the LGA weren't massively involved in this one perhaps, but you know, I always find them really refreshing in terms of that honest feedback and actually the interaction with staff and users and everything else. So well done on the whole process. I think just turning into the recommendations that have obviously come out of it, and this is where it always, you know, when you go back to certain places to on the peer review sort of updates visit, I always find is how do we now, particularly in this peer review, around co-production and early intervention, how do we translate that into measurable system wide improvements instead of that sort of isolated initiative? So it really benefits the whole service.
Thank you. Really, really good question. So completely support around co-production and people with lived experience and really doing that from the very beginning. In our adult improvement programme, there is a key focus area on co-production, not just with people with learning disability and autism, but that we're speaking to all of our community and people who access our services to co-develop and deliver that, which includes unpaid carers as well. So we have a core strand and a steering group that is in place to facilitate some of that. So throughout all of our service delivery and all of our improvement programme, there is that golden thread to co-production. And there's that challenge there when that's not in place. And that through all of our strategies and our programmes of work, that we can really hear the voices of people within that. That's really important to our values and the work that we're doing in adult social care. So to give you some assurance, there is a plan around that, not just for this improvement piece of work, but the whole of the work that we're doing in adult social care and community wellbeing.
Thank you very much, Hayley. Thank you, Council Cook. Council Lee.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for another really good report. I took a few things from it and I don't mean to sound critical because there are good things in this. I think it's really important, point 1.4 on page 46 talks about recognising the importance of moving conversations away from who pays for what into a collective understanding of what prevents delays, et cetera, et cetera. I won't read the whole paragraph, but it's not just who's paying for what, it's about having a really good service that meets the needs of the people that need that support. And it has identified some challenges and areas for working on. And I wanted to ask, Chair, if we could programme in someone to come back in, for argument's sake, six months or so and tell us, right, this is what we find and so far, this is what we've done, you know. And I know six months is probably quite a short frame of time for that, but a year seems a very long time if there are things that need addressing. And I would ask if it could come back to this committee so we can see what the progress has been on those, working on those improvements. Thank you.
I'm sure that can be arranged?
Yes, so that work is ongoing. So we're doing that. So really happy to bring an update to the committee so you can see how we've responded to that and how we're able to sustain those changes for improved joint working.
Thank you very much. Council Overton.
Thank you. I just wonder if the recommendations are, I mean, I guess they are typical, but I wonder if they're clear enough to tell me what difference implementing changes would make to an ordinary person who is accessing the service? You know, some of the terms here are very, you know, but this is not shaped, you know, but this has not shaped commissioning ambitions, you know. There's a lot of words in here that are quite hard for me to, it doesn't say very specifically what's needed to the ordinary layman. Perhaps it's written in a particular way that you would understand very well and the ordinary layman wouldn't. So looking at these recommendations, and I think that's, is it number one to 1.1 there? You know, normally I'm used to seeing recommendations one, two, three, you know, which aren't here. But we've got discussion points, whole system working, is that it? So what, can you give us an example of a change that's needed and what difference that might make? Thanks.
Yeah. So thank you for that feedback. I'll take that back. I think one of the things just to give you assurance on is that within the report, and this is feedback from myself, we focused it around the themes. So underneath those themes are targeted pieces of work that we can measure successes against that have a number of different deliverables and activity to be able to support with those. That is then monitored in the improvement programme. Your comment around outcomes is so important. So part of the work that we're doing is within the learning disability and autism partnership is focusing on outcomes for people and we're linking this to people's assessment of need. So once we do an assessment of need and identify how we can support that need, at the review process, we then measure the person's outcome. So have we achieved that? And if so, what has been the outcome for the person? Have we not achieved that and why not? Are we still working on that? That'll help us get a picture on. So what difference has it made to people's lives? How many people have achieved the outcomes they wanted within that? I think an example of a deliverable from that is around people with learning disability and autism seeking employment and volunteering opportunities. They gave the quad as a really good example of exceptional practice when that works really well. And the challenge to us was, well, how can we deliver opportunities for all people with learning disability and autism to seek either employment or volunteering opportunities? So that piece of work will then be managed within the preparing for adulthood, how are we including those aspirations for people with educational health and care plans? And also working within the learning disability and autism partnership board to have a work stream that really focuses on that ambition for people, which will include on that board people with lived experience as well.
It really helps ordinary people like me if it's written in a really common language way. It probably wasn't, this probably quotes from the report. But it's inconsistent understanding across the local system limits, collective ownership and progress. You know, as a sentence, you've got to think an awful lot behind what that must mean. So for ordinary people like me, I'd like to see something that I can just understand, oh, that means this is needed, you know. So for ordinary people like me, I'd like to see something that I can just understand, oh, that means this is needed, you know. And what you said helps, yes.
There is a document that we also produced that is simpler, so that we could share with the peer review. So if it is okay with the Chair, I'm happy to send that over after today.
That's great. I mean, you'd call this high level, I suppose, wouldn't you? But actually, what we want is something, I'd like is something concrete that I can say, oh, yeah, they're going to do this, that'll improve lives. You know, if I'm talking to somebody in the street, I'd like to say, oh, yeah, you know, we're getting this organised now. And I struggle with a sentence like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
But more like the quote, I can understand straight.
Thank you councillor Overton. If you could send that to all the members of the committee, please, Hayley. That would be, I think that would be advantageous for everyone. Thank you. Any more questions or comments from anyone, please? Thank you for your presentation. I would not, sorry. Thank you for your questions. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I propose firstly, I move that the committee endorse this report. And secondly, I move that the committee welcome that the findings of the peer review will be addressed in the Adults Improvement Plan. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate now by raising your hand. Thank you. Let the record reflect that councillor Young has dis-
No.
Oh, I apologise. No, no one has dissented. Sorry. Now move on to the next item in the agenda, item seven, intermediate care and preparations for winter. This report can be found on pages 49 through to 70 of the agenda pack. The report provides the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee with an outline of the winter planning arrangement for 2025-26. The report will be presented by Hayley Echols, Deputy Director of Adult Social Services. Would you please present your report in about five minutes or so, Hayley? Thank you.
Thank you. So as this usual time of year, we bring our winter plans for review. So this report outlines the winter plan that meets the requirements for the Department of Health and Social Care. And the plan is to ensure that we can meet the needs, including demand and any surges for people over the winter period to support safe and timely hospital discharge. So adult social care have been planning for winter since June. So we start planning for winter in summer so that we can make sure that we've got robust plans in place. And this has included the system winter exercise a G S. This has ensured that any, we review any lessons of that we could learn from last year to help improve the processing and people's experience and the system working this year. And that that we can ensure that people have safe and timely discharges from hospital. A lot of the services that are documented in the report are tied and tested, and they're in line with previous reports that have been to the committer. What I'd like to draw people's attention to is the introduction of Optica. And this is a new system approach for this winter, taking on board the learning from last winter. And this enables the system to follow a person's admission into hospital and also that journey throughout the hospital system that clearly leads to the discharge planning. This is, this system enables us to plan for discharge at the earliest opportunity, thinking about recovery, equipment enablement, and what we can do to support the person. But it also enables us to see any system challenges and barriers in the system that we may have not seen before, and enables us to be able to respond rather than react to those. This will ensure that we unblock any barriers in discharging and that the person has a smooth journey throughout the system and back into home if possible. I do know councillor Cook's comments, so just to draw your attention to the Hospital Avoidance Response Team. A lot of what adult social care do is not just about safe discharges from hospital. A lot of what we do is around hospital avoidance, so trying to keep people in their own homes for as long as possible. So for people, for example, with dementia, it's really quite distressing to be in a different environment that then only impacts their health but also their wellbeing as well. So where it's possible, we aim and try to keep people in their own homes in the community for as long as possible. And this team is built up with staff from health and adult social care. And where it's not possible, that we make sure that there is a smooth transition into hospital for that person. So I'm hoping that's a brief overview, just drawing people's attention to what we've done since last winter, the preparations that we've put in place since June this year, and the note of the new approach that we're taking in tracking that person's journey. So please can the committee endorse the winter plan for 2025-26?
Thank you very, very much, Hayley. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Do we have any speakers? councillor Reeve?
Thank you. Thank you, Hayley. The new Optica system, I'm just wondering, are there any safeguards inbuilt within that that stops people being discharged to home at hours of the day that aren't particularly sensible, particularly during the wintertime when nobody's there? I'm not saying it's happened locally, but you pick up the paper and you hear these horror stories about people being dropped off at home at one o'clock in the morning and disoriented. And there has been occasions where people have been dropped off at the wrong property. What safeguards are inbuilt into this new system to make sure those sort of things don't happen?
Thank you. A really important question, and safeguarding is our number one priority within the organisation and with our health partners. And the main priority is around safe discharging. So we're discharging at the earliest opportunity so not reacting to system pressures where we may be thinking that people need to go home and therefore leading to people possibly being discharged from hospital and the impact of them being significant. We have a team of adult social care social workers and nurses that are on site at all of the hospitals to help facilitate that discharge plan. So for people with care and support needs where they do need packages of support and things in place to support them to sustain their health and wellbeing in the community, there will always be a discharge planning meeting where it's agreed with the person, the people that care for them or their advocates, what that discharge process will look like. This tracking system will enable us to make sure that that happens, and if it doesn't, why not? And anybody that is discharged home where they're put, a place where they may experience any risk, there will always be a DATEx that's submitted into the system for the system learning from a health perspective. And where applicable, there'll also be an adult safeguarding referral that's made to look into why that occurred.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Hayley. councillor Cook, sorry, apologies. councillor Lee?
Thanks. I'd echo councillor Reeve's concerns actually about people going home at ungodly hours. I think he makes a really good point. I remember from the other end of it, in a hospital, if somebody was going back to a care home, the care home actually had the prerogative of saying, we won't accept them after whatever, six o'clock at night. But if you were sending somebody to their own home, it was very different. And I've known people be discharged very late, and I'm talking sort of seven or eight o'clock in the evening. It wasn't common, but it did happen. And that was largely down to the transport because the transport was so stretched that by the time, you didn't really know what time it was going to turn up. You knew what time it was meant to turn up. But, and it was down to that. But my question there is, the Optica system, does that log what time the patient leaves the ward? Because I'd want to know, you know, because it's all right saying that a DATEx will be, if the person does the DATEx, then it will be, it will be there. But I would like to know if the time that the person leaves hospital is actually logged on this Optica system because it really ought to be. And the other point I'd make as well, and this isn't an LCC thing, but the discharge lounge at Lincoln Hospital, I just used to think it was horrible. It wasn't comfortable. It just wasn't really what it should have been. If people were there for only an hour or two, then that was fine to be just sat in a chair. But to be honest, to be, the way it was, if people were sat there for hours on end, which they often were, waiting for transport and waiting for medications, then it wasn't a very nice setup. And I'd like to hear that that's actually, I know it's not an LCC thing, but it's part of the whole. I'd like to know that the discharge lounge has actually improved to what it was like when my mum was sent there when she had dementia and I wasn't very happy about it, about the circumstances around that. I'd like to know that that's improved. This is all about elderly, getting elderly, vulnerable people home in safe circumstances. And that's my concerns on this.
Thank you. So your first question around the system and date of them being discharged, I don't know. So I'll take that question away and feed back to the group. Again, with the second question, I don't know that level of detail around the discharge lounge. So I'll take that question to our health colleagues and feed back to the committer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hayley. Thank you councillor Lee. Any more questions or comments from anyone? councillor Redfern?
Following on from councillor Lee, there was somebody came down our street who had to be looked after. She had been more than two hours in the ambulance because there was other people. Is there any way of cutting this down? You know, she was only a short distance from the hospital, but because there was other people on the road, they ended up being two hours in the ambulance, which is very uncomfortable for her. Is there anything that can be done about this?
Thank you for that. And I'm sorry to hear about that person's experience. Because the transport within the hospital is managed by the hospital, that is something that I'll take away and have a discussion with them to feed back that experience to see if there's anything that they are doing to improve that customer experience. Recognising it's really difficult, isn't it? People just want to get home. So I'll take that question away and again feed back the response to the committer.
Thank you, Hayley. Thank you councillor Redfern. councillor Lee?
It's just a very quick one. I completely sympathise, but I'll tell you what, if you started separating people out, they'd wait even longer for transport then unless things have improved. But I do think Simon's here, and I'm on health scrutiny. Some of these, I do appreciate now, they are really questions for Health Scrutiny Committee, aren't they, some of these? Do you think that around the hospitals, they're worth passing on to the Chair? Because we've obviously got some concerns, haven't we, about people leaving hospitals? And they're not really LCC concerns, they're more ULHT ones.
Just on that particular issue of non-emergency patient transport, which is what the NHS refer to, that is actually listed for the Health Scrutiny Committee on the 21st of January. So that is the first time in this council term that the committee will be looking at that service. But that is the, that is provided by the East Midlands Ambulance Service, but it is, as I say, not part of their emergency provision, non-emergency patient transport. So I don't know if that's helpful because that will provide the Health Scrutiny Committee with an opportunity perhaps to raise issues. And I'm sure they will raise that issue and several other issues on that, at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Simon. Any more questions or comments? No? Thank you very much for all of those. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the committee endorse the plans and preparation for responding to winter pressures. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate now by raising your hand. Thank you. That is agreed. We now move on to agenda item eight, substance use services and partnership working, including links with prisons. This report can be found on pages 71 through to 80 of the agenda pack. The report provides the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee with an overview of substance use services. The report will be presented by Lucy Govans, Public Health Consultant. Lucy, would you like to present your report in about five minutes or so, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you councillor Cullen. And just for the audience of the committee, I'm here with Paige Wilson, who's an operations manager from Lincolnshire Recovery Partnership as well. So the report provides an overview of our specialist drug and alcohol treatment service in Lincolnshire. It talks about some of the key drivers, so why it's so important that we have good comprehensive drug and alcohol treatment services. Alcohol and drug use can have significant impacts both on the individual who uses the substances, their family and their friends and their local community, and also the wider economy. So there are lots of reasons why it's an important priority for us in terms of addressing preventing alcohol-related harm and drug-related harm. The report provides an overview of the services that we commission through Lincolnshire Recovery Partnership, which is an alliance model. It's three organisations working together. Turning Point, who are a national drug and alcohol treatment provider. Double Impact, who are a local, a more local organisation led by people with lived experience of drug and alcohol use themselves. And Framework, who provide housing support services locally. And the service itself offers a wide range of evidence-based interventions, so things like individual one-to-one support, group work, and also support around housing and employment. So there's a wide range of services on offer, as well as preventative interventions with, for young people that we run together with colleagues in the Community Safety Team around, that's called Stay Safe. So that's a programme that goes into schools and works with children as they're kind of growing up through their teenagers to help them understand and kind of keep safe from drug and alcohol use. And we also have Beacon, which is our family support service that supports essentially carers, family and friends of people who are supporting people with drug and alcohol-related harm. And that's really important to help somebody to kind of stay in recovery once they've entered the treatment system. In terms of a few headline figures, in the most recent, well, in the first year of the contract, which was 2024-25, the service supported just over 3,500 adults and 229 young people. We also work, we also reach out into our injecting drug-using population through our needle and syringe programme, which delivered just shy of 2,500 harm reduction sessions. And in terms of that Stay Safe programme, we worked with just over 15,000 children across the county to help them understand the harms of drug and alcohol use. And our family support service has worked with 234 people who are friends and family of people who are using drugs or alcohol. In terms of the funding, we have funding from several different sources. So the Public Health Grant itself funds core treatment and recovery services to just over £6 million a year. We also are in receipt of significant grants from central government, from the Department of Health and Social Care and MHCLG, and that's £3.26 million a year. And then we have several smaller grants to work more closely with specific partners. So for example, working more closely with the probation service and also around individual placement and support, which is employment support for people who are in treatment to support them into work. So in total, we've got £9.8 million of investment into drug and alcohol treatment services across the county. And we do work very closely with partners across the health and care system and the criminal justice system. So we work closely with the police. We work closely with probation, with the prisons, and have several programmes in place, for example, to support people. So what we call diversion from custody into treatment if somebody has committed an offence where it's sort of perhaps a first-time offence or, and where drug or alcohol use has been identified as a factor in what's led to that criminal behaviour to prevent future criminal activity. And we have close working between prisons and community services as well, so that when someone is released from prison, if they're in treatment within prison, that we can pick up their care. We call that continuity of care within our community service. So there's lots of different ways in which we work with criminal justice partners. Also, we work really closely with the Integrated Care Board, in particular around what we call dual diagnosis, so where somebody has serious mental illness and also drug or alcohol use together. And we work closely with LPFT, the Mental Health Trust, to make sure that we've got staff, staff between our recovery partnership and the Mental Health Trust working closely together to look after those patients who have co-occurring conditions. And we also work really closely with our housing-related support service as many of the residents within that service also have used drugs or alcohol in a problematic way. In terms of the future, we are expecting, so the grant funding that I mentioned that comes from DHSC, MHCLG, we are, at the moment, that's come as a one-year settlement each year. And we are expecting before the end of this calendar year to be informed about a multi-year settlement, probably three years, which will help us to get some stability in terms of that future funding, which will be very beneficial. We are also just in the process of drafting a new Lincolnshire Drug and Alcohol Strategy because our current strategy runs out at the end of this year. And now that we have our new service in place, there's lots of additional work that we want to do in terms of prevention, treatment and recovery across the county. And also within that, it's really important that we reflect things like the new NHS 10-year plan. So I will pause there. Thank you very much, councillor Cullen. So I will pause there. Thank you very much, councillor Cullen.
Thank you very much, Lucy. I find it really reassuring that these services are there and people can access them freely. Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Wimhurst?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say thank you, Lucy, for a brilliant report and also echo the sentiments of the Chair, that it's absolutely wonderful, you know, what you're doing here in terms of treatment for all these things. I did notice in the report, so the people accessing treatment at the moment, we've got 1,663 accessing treatment for opiate addiction. Now, to my understanding, quite a few people get addicted to things like that simply because they've been on high-strength medications from their GPs, and then they move on to heroin and things like that. Do we know what proportion of those 1,663 people that could potentially be affected by? I mean, it seems like the NHS do prescribe codeine, morphine and a lot of stuff like that. And when the treatment runs out, people don't get it anymore, so they have to move on to illicit substances. So it's kind of like the NHS may be creating the monster itself and then, on the other hand, trying to treat it. So I just wonder if we have any information, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's a good question. And we certainly do see a lot of information and intelligence flowing out of the US around the kind of that opioid pandemic, if you like, or epidemic, rather. In the UK, we do have much stricter regulations around the use of certain opiates. So we don't see as much in terms of the follow-through of people who perhaps have started on prescription medications and moved to opiates, particularly injecting kind of drug use. But I don't think we've got an exact, I don't think we can answer that question specifically, can we? I don't know, Paige, whether there's anything in terms of the 1,600 opiate users who are in treatment, whether you know anything about the kinds of the ways in which they use opiates that might help to shed a light on that?
Yes. So generally, our highest population of opiate service users are people that have entered treatment for heroin use because they've been introduced to heroin in various ways, not necessarily through opiate addiction. We liaise really closely with GPs as well around their prescribing. So we make sure if we prescribe anything, the GP's aware and vice versa, so that we can avoid potentially people relapsing or potentially becoming opiate dependent when they weren't previously. It would be difficult to pull a figure off in terms of data. It would be more sort of anecdotal in terms of what historically they did use. We do record sort of type of opiate at point of assessment. But due to the transfer in service and historical records from people that have been in treatment for a number of years, it would be really difficult to get an exact figure, I think, on that one.
Okay, no worries. Thank you very much. That's brilliant. Cheers.
Councillor Bean?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, interesting report. I'm just wondering, as a result of the European Court of Human Rights, HM Prison Service are now not allowed to force prisoners to detox. This results in a large number of prisoners being released with the same dependency issues that put them in the criminal justice system in the first place. What impact does this have on our substance use services? The cost to Lincoln County Council and the long-term future outcomes for these individuals?
So a decision to enter treatment would always be, well, so the offer of treatment is there within prisons and within our community, but it would always have to be an individual's choice to enter treatment. So I think we can't, I don't think we have seen any particular change in terms of whether or not we've got more or less people perhaps coming into treatment in community after they've left prisons. We do have quite a good record in Lincolnshire around continuity of care. So we are very good at working with our prisons when someone has been in treatment in prisons. Because one of the challenges we have is that the provider, well, A, somebody could go to prison elsewhere in the country, but also even locally, the provider of drug and alcohol treatment services within prisons is a different organisation to our local community provider. It's always a challenge and we do always lose a proportion of people from treatment when they come out of prison. But yeah, in terms of the specific answer to the question, it's not something that we've seen a big impact of locally.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, councillor Bean. Councillor Young?
Yeah, hi Lucy. As a related support service, I take it it's floating support service as opposed to accommodation-based? And if so, what's the referral process?
So if someone is in our housing-related support service and they have an identified drug or alcohol treatment need, then we will proactively in-reach into the service, whether it's floating support or within the service itself. So it's flexible to meet the needs of the individual within housing-related support. And we work very closely. I don't know whether you want to say anything more about kind of working relationship between Framework, because obviously it's part of the same organisation, same kind of partnership working.
Yes. So because our Framework is the same provider for the housing element within LRP and the housing-related support services, so we co-locate in most, so Lincoln, Skegness and Boston specifically, but also across the county. We will co-locate in all of those housing-related support services so that we can take the service to the service users, rather than them having to come to us, which increases the level of engagement and successful outcomes there. So it would be the, we don't manage the referrals into housing-related support, but the housing-related support services work really closely with our service.
Just come back to that. So just to be clear, in terms of an individual in the community, say, let's say, just south Lincoln. So is the known in terms of having a particular need? And, you know, things are starting to deteriorate. There might be, you know, risk around the family, there might be risk around employment, et cetera. It just seems to me that there's a confusion, not confusion, but there's a lack of clarity in terms of actually how our referral process would work. Could that family refer into a service to get some floating support into that family and support those for a short period of time, let's say, in terms of actually getting into the right appropriate services? Or just advice and guidance, really? I'm just, any clarity around that would help.
Yes. So for example, we would accept referrals from any route. So for example, if a family member contacted us because they were concerned about an individual with a substance use issue, so we would offer support to the individual, but also to the family members via our Beacon service. And then what we would do is comprehensively assess what are the needs of this person, whether that be housing, employment. And then we would allocate that person to the right team. So for example, if it was a housing issue, they might sit under our Rough Sleeper team and they would then link in with the appropriate services within that area. So whether that would be floating support via Framework, it might be referring into our internal IPS service. But we always work in like a multi-agency approach. So if we're not the right service for that person, we work really closely with the other services that are. And then we would create a multidisciplinary team around that person. And now we have the Beacon service. That means we can also heavily involve the family if they need that support as well and refer those to the right support services, whether that's, you know, mental health support or supporting them to access a GP and things like that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Cook?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I think just expanding on some of the points you've raised, particularly around, you know, you've got a number of vulnerable individuals that we're obviously dealing with as part of this. So how are sort of newly-trained police and sort of prison partners being supported to maintain that continuity of care when individuals move between custody, hospital and community settings? And I think just further from councillor Young's point is just your reflections in terms of the level and quality of service that we provide across the whole county. Because obviously I know, you know, we are a huge geographic area. How do we ensure we have that real quality service across the entirety of Lincolnshire?
So I'll take the second half of that question first, if that's okay, councillor Cook. So we have six locations, fixed physical locations where we work from across the county. They're based on where we see the greatest need, if you like, in terms of the number of people in the local community who might need services and also where we perhaps have greater levels of deprivation. And then beyond that, we will also take services out to smaller communities flexibly. So it's a bit like a hub-and-spoke model to make sure that we can reach out into other communities that don't have a hub. And then beyond that, if we identify, so certain cohorts of people in particular, we might have identified as being particularly vulnerable and find it harder to come into services. So that's where we start to do our more assertive outreach and we take the service out to those individuals or into those communities. Or if they're perhaps in kind of housing-related support, for example, we might go out to that service. So we take basically a flexible approach to make sure that no matter where anyone is within Lincolnshire, that we can get the right services and the support that they need out to them.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lee?
Oh, just sorry. I was just going to answer the second part. Yes, the first part, sorry. So in terms of that sort of reaching those different people and working together, so we have three staff co-located within the hospital. So we have two in Lincoln Hospital, one in Boston. So anyone that enters the hospital, we have staff within those services that can then identify those people, offer them support there and make sure that they don't sort of fall off the radar in terms of entering back into our service or getting the appropriate post-detox support and that kind of thing. And then we also work really closely with neighbourhood policing teams. So we go out on assertive outreach with police. We link together in terms of if we've got vulnerable individuals and we both want to make sure that that person's getting the right support, they might bring people to us or we might meet them where they're at. And then we have, all of our criminal justice team are co-located within probation offices across the whole county so that we can co-work with people and do joint, what we call care plans. And we also do in-reach within HMP Lincoln, because 65% of our prison releases that come to us all come from HMP Lincoln. So we work closely with them to make sure that we're seeing those people before their release to hopefully encourage them to engage in. So we try and, again, take that sort of multidisciplinary approach to make sure that we're all communicating with each other and we're all aware of who those vulnerable individuals are so that we can reach them sort of wherever they are, in the community or in the prison.
Apologies about that. Councillor Lee?
Thanks. I've been scanning through this report again. I did read it last night. I'm just staggered at the amount, the prevalence of drugs within our local communities. I'm quite sort of, I live in the area where I represent and when you've got your ear to the ground, you can tell by some of the crime that's going on and stuff what's happening. And I'm pleased to see that you work with Stay Safe, because it doesn't just affect the person who's taking the drugs, although according to this, there's over 200 young people and children that have accessed treatment as well. It affects families and children and it becomes almost a way of life. And I just wondered, because the Stay Safe Programme is something that schools buy into rather than always go out there. And I'm just concerned if that service to tell young people about the dangers of drugs is going out right across the county to everywhere. Or if it's just like where I represent in Lincoln, you know, it just worries me a bit that maybe a school in a more rural area, the children might not get this kind of support and guidance and advice. And I just wondered if you could tell us a bit about where you go to across the county with the Stay Safe sessions? I'm going to one in February where I live, so I'll get to know more about it.
Yeah, the Stay Safe Programme is incredibly popular with our schools across the county. And I know from talking to the individual who manages that service very recently, that kind of in very early September, they were full up for the entire of this school year. They work really closely with schools on an ongoing basis to make sure that they have good coverage across the whole county, that we're getting into all of our communities so that no kind of child is left behind, if you like, in terms of having that understanding, that opportunity to ask questions around drugs and alcohol of our kind of Lincolnshire Recovery Partnership and experts who are trained and, you know, very well experienced in supporting young people in an age-appropriate conversation. Because we work with children kind of right across, well, right across the first four years of secondary school. So obviously, the nature of the conversation needs to be slightly different at different ages. They will have heard more. So all of that is tailored to the age and they do reach out across the whole county. If it would be helpful, what I could do is talk to colleagues in Stay Safe and just ask if they've got anything that would summarise the schools that have taken up support perhaps in the last academic year, just to provide that reassurance that the coverage is wide. Okay, I can do that.
I think that would be welcome. Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Bean?
Thank you. Hello, Lucy. Just wondering, how successful do you think the local strategy has been over the three points? In one, delivering sustainable treatment and recovery systems, cutting the drug supply chain and driving down drug use and making it socially unacceptable?
So I think it's different for each point, I would say. So if I think back about our treatment and recovery service and the system that we had in place at the start of the strategy, it was miles apart from where we are now. We had a much smaller service. It was about half the size that it is now. Just a really simple point, like our caseloads for our drug workers, who are the individuals who are working day-to-day with people across the service. I was at scrutiny probably two or three years ago, talking about caseloads of 75 to 80, which is double what they should be. They're now down at around about 35. So that means that we can provide a much better quality of treatment and care to people who are in treatment. It means that we can provide more support to the people around them and it means that we are much more likely to be successful in getting them into recovery and sustaining that recovery. So I think when it comes to the treatment and support system, I'd say we are in a really different, much stronger position than we were several years ago. In terms of kind of tackling drug supply chains, the police have been doing an awful lot of work around county lines, which we do see challenges of in parts of the county in particular. We're what we call a kind of an importer of county lines, so we have lots flowing into the county, but they tend to start off in the big cities. There've been several successful police kind of operations in breaking down those county lines. A challenge, though, is that you break one down and another one pops up. So it is an ongoing battle, probably is not an inappropriate word, to have the intelligence to understand where those lines are. But that actually links back to some of the work, for example, that we do with Stay Safe around prevention, because county lines often, the individuals setting them up prey on young, vulnerable children. So if we can work with our children from a young age in an age-appropriate way to help them understand what's normal, what's not normal, what to look out for and what to do if someone approaches you with a request, where to go for that support, that's a really important part of the work in tackling those drug supply chains at the same time. And in terms of driving kind of down drug use within communities, this is again another really challenging one. One of the things that is difficult for us to know is how successful we are being in tackling kind of drug use, because we don't have routine drug use data collected. It's a legal activity, so it's very difficult to actually understand at any one time how many people in our communities are using opiates, heroin, cocaine, cannabis. So we have to go off kind of triangulating intelligence from lots of different sources. So it's very difficult to know how successful we've been in that. But what I would say is that we are getting better at picking up and responding to new trends in drug use. So for example, we're doing a lot of work locally at the moment around ketamine use, which people may have seen it's been in the news. And actually, Lincolnshire Recovery Partnership was part of a Good Morning Britain piece a few weeks ago on the work that we're doing to tackle ketamine use locally. We are doing a small piece of research with local young people at the moment to understand more about their ketamine use, what gets them into it, what kind of support would be available, what would they like to see to help them stop that ketamine use or prevent it in the first place. So whilst we can't definitively say that we're driving down kind of drug use, I think we are responding to emerging trends and trying to get in front of those so that we can make sure that we're reactive and responsive as a system to those harms that we're seeing emerging.
Thank you very much, Lucy.
Thank you for that. Can I just come back on that? I would say, I agree, it's hard to detect all drug use. But certainly I've found that over the past few years, the prevalence of cannabis and skunk has gone through the roof. I mean, I can walk around anywhere in Lincoln and you can smell it. And even a small town like Caister, if you walk around there, you will smell it. So I think we still have a serious problem and a long way to go. So I think we still have a serious problem and a long way to go. But thank you for your report.
Thank you very much, councillor Bean. What I just wanted to add is, all those points you have addressed are very, very important, but I find that the earlier we deal with county lines issues, the, the better for everyone. So thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Litchfield?
Yeah, so my question really relates to the volunteer network that you mentioned. So I think six thousand hours, something like that. So I'm just interested in how those volunteers are recruited, how they're trained, and are they sort of users of the service at some point? Yeah.
So we currently have twenty-five active volunteers and eight about to start volunteering. We have, our volunteer programme, if you like, is managed by the double impact aspect of the service, and we have a volunteer coordinator that leads on supporting and recruiting volunteers. A high proportion of our volunteers are people that have used the service before, and we have a really good amount of volunteers and staff that have lived experience and have previously used the service, so they help shape what the service looks like from a lived experience perspective. And then we have, Double Impact have a really great academy programme where they offer training and qualifications to people to support them to either volunteer for us or get paid employment either with us or elsewhere. So yeah, we have quite a robust programme for our volunteers.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Litchfield. Any more questions or comments from anyone? Thank you very much. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the committee note the information presented on the substance use service. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate now by raising your hand. Thank you, that is agreed. We now move on to agenda item nine, Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item is on pages eighty-one through to eighty-eight of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme. The report will be presented by Simon Evans, Health and Scrutiny Officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The, if I could ask the committee to turn to pages eighty-two onwards. On this occasion, I'm reporting that there are significant changes to the work programme in that there are date changes, including an additional meeting. So on page eighty-two to eighty-three, there are seven items listed on that work programme for the third of December. Four of those are pre-decision items for the executive on the sixth of January. It has been confirmed that the executive is due to hold a second meeting in January. The executive will be meeting on the sixth of January and the thirteenth of January. And the, the items in terms of adult social care will be listed for the executive on the thirteenth of January. As a result, and in order to lighten the load of the third of December meeting, it is planned that this committee will meet, have an additional meeting on the Wednesday, the seventh of January, to consider items which are currently four to seven on the list there. And the second thing is moving forward, so the January, the twenty-eighth of January meeting continues unchanged. And moving to page eighty-four, the, the meeting on the fourth of March, there is a plan to move that to Friday, the twenty-seventh of February. So that will enable the pre-decision scrutiny item on the residential framework rates, which is a, a significant element of expenditure for, for adult social care, and is due for a decision by the executive on the third of March. So by moving the committee from Wednesday to the Friday of the previous week, that enables the pre-decision scrutiny to take place. All of this will be explained in an email and also appointments in the next day or so, or the next day or two, and that will actually make it clear. But those are the changes that I need to report at this, at this meeting. An apologies, it's not come on email before, but the, I only just learned, we, we had a plan for this, but we only had confirmation that the executive has, has sort of gone for the date of the thirteenth of January, only in the last sort of twenty-four hours or so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Simon. Thank you for your presentation. I would now like to invite members of the committee to make any relevant statements and ask questions. Do we have any speakers? Thank you for, thank you very much. No questions? This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that we endorse the changes to the work programme, including the additional meeting on seventh of January and the change of date of the March meeting to twenty-seventh of February. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate now by raising your hand. Thank you.
Chair, through you, can I just say, I'm going to abstain on that, because it makes, I understand why you've got to do it, that's fine. Well, it's not fine, but it, it just makes it really difficult. I can get to all of these meetings at short notice, because I don't go to work, but for some people, it makes it really, really difficult. And I just think that we ought to note that when things are changed around, because people, people who've got all the commitments plan around this, but, so I'll abstain if there's any vote on it. I, I don't particularly agree with it, but I don't, I can see why you've got...
Thank you very much, councillor Lee. Just on a personal note, thank you very, very much to all the officers for keeping their reports so concise and to the point, thank you. And I sincerely apologise for all my coughing and have a little bit of a cold, so I do apologise. That concludes the business of this meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.